I'll make the order. The Republican flag, please. Unless the flag is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need approval of the agenda and there is an amendment.
Make your motion to approve the agenda with the amendment. That's stated.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda's approved. Uh, patron comments, we have none. Consent agenda. Any other abstentions? Does it appear that consent agenda, I would just present?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Onto informational items. We have a parent concern over policy JHCD.
We have provided JHCD for you all to be able to leave.
Are you gonna come up here now?
Yes, sir.
Alright. Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Hello. Some of you know me from, from, from the house. Okay, so I have on here the policy for JHCD under being looked at because we don't have very specific policy set up either in the student handbook or the adult student rights in regards to anything having to do with medication and the ability to bring it to school, turn it into the nurse, pick it up at the end of the day. It's one thing for the way it's currently written where students have to have a parent legal guardian, but as you know, an 18 to 21 year old can enroll in school is, they're their own legal adult. If they went to, they could leave school, they could drop out, do whatever they want. But if they're there, obviously, they're showing that they want to get a high school diploma. They are responsible as it is. But, um, so Missouri state law has on here that if they are, according to 431.061, consent to any medical treatment, they are the ones who have to give, have to give the permission, not a parent. So signing documentation in regards to that is kind of ridiculous and having to have that parent transport and pick it up every single day that they would need that medication such as if they were given an emergency medication that they have to take for 12 to 14 days. That parent then has to bring that medication to the school before it starts and then pick it up before the end of the school day. Every single day.
You do have a way so that you would not have to do that.
Okay. There is not when it is a controlled substance that it has to say in that specific bottle, such as consent. So for something that you can get a secondary bottle for any other, yes, but not for that kind of medication. And then I also have, I brought with me the medication administration in Missouri schools according to the Department of Health and Senior Services and how it outlaws those rules in regards to a student, adult student, uh, being able to choose their administration of their medication and also their right for allowing privacy in regards to their health care, both at school and outside of school.
Sam, how long do you have medication?
I don't think we're allowed to speak names, Mr. Bachman.
And your student.
Okay. Uh, he was on it for almost 12 to 14 days.
Okay. Alright. So it's been two weeks to school?
Yes, sir. Um, he is done now, thankfully. So that's an upside. But there is still this policy needs to get adjusted because not all students who are 18 and up, especially ones who are like, for instance, in a foster care situation, they become their own legal guardian. They do not have an adult peer adult to step in anyway, which they shouldn't have. They are adult by all legal recourse. And it makes no sense to have that policy in place that doesn't give specific guidelines to adult students who are 18 to 21, which is how long they can be in a school for. And I think that we need to get it to where, I know from looking up further, that the JHCD policy does specifically state certain things, but it's left up to more of an interpretation basis. And I think we need very clear guidelines in regards to adult students and their own personal medical rights. I hope that kind of helps. Do you have any other questions I should have pronounced if you want to see them? Cause I've been in contact with both the Missouri Department of Education and the US Department of Education and the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services to be able to acquire information.
Have you read the policy center?
Yes, sir.
Uh, what, what specifically would you change? And I think you just said part of that, but tell me, tell me your thoughts on that.
Um, actually here, uh, Mr. Bachman, you have a specific guideline for word for word read up. Can you read that out loud for us?
Word for word?
Uh, the part that we underlined earlier, when we went over it, that you had underlined.
Okay. Alright. Uh, as far as a student being allowed by law?
Yes, sir.
Okay. District prohibits students from possessing medications unless the student is a bylaw law producer. So... And, and has they given permission in accordance with district procedures? Yeah.
So, so basically it's by law, they're a legal adult. And I contacted also the local sheriff's department to double check it. So even if someone is a student, they are considered a legal adult and they have all the rights that are given to them both by FERPA, by HIPAA, and the Missouri constitutional law. So I don't understand how this policy hasn't been kind of fixed and clarified in a way that makes it very simple for adult students to advocate for themselves. Cause as both educators, parents, our whole goal in general is to help educate and guard our students to where they have the ability to advocate for themselves, especially of students even who have IEPs. They are taught how to advocate and they should be allowed to do so and accept and show those rights and be learning how to do them in a very controlled and safe environment to even do that as well.
Are you asking for adult students to be able to carry prescriptions around campus or something different?
No, just that they're allowed to bring them to school, turn them into a nurse's office and pick them up at the end of the day, not to keep them throughout the entire school day. And if you, there is a, I know we do actually have certain policies in place to where a student is allowed to self administer, but it's a whole process as well to where they have to go to the doctor, show the doctor they know how to give it, then show the nurse they know how to give it for themselves. But that's usually reserved for situations such as if a child's a diabetic, they're on a pump, they can self administer their insulin and so forth. So there is certain things like that, but not in situations where, you know, it's an emergency medication that's been prescribed for only a small amount of timeframe, not something that is a longstanding medication throughout the entire school year. Does that make sense?
My question was, and what is, what has been our procedure for that section there? It's always been parents bringing it in? Thanks, Nancy.
No problem.
Is there? I guess. Well, it's just never come up before.
I know most seniors usually enter their senior year at 17, not 18, so I know this is probably, it's not been brought up as often. However, there are situations, you know, why students should be in this hall, anywhere from their birthday cut off to they end in having some fan medical procedure that put them behind longer in school and have to stay involved longer, which is why we have it up to 21 years age.
Would allowing 18 year olds to bring it and play it into the nurse cause safety hazards?
We feel that it wants to leave, our recommendations to leave the policy as it's set for the safety of all students.
Dr. Johnson, for like certain, um, different scenarios, like what you mentioned, a foster child who ages out of the system, just cause they're still in high school, that's a thing that they are under anybody's care at that point. What about for students like that?
So those students like that have other measures of support around them. We've got a lot of different programs set up so that they receive certain accommodations and supports, so they do have representation at the, as the parent role. So they, some, some schools students may need a, like 504 plan or there is other supports placed for them, so they're not just a sole student representing themselves. So there would be a team that would consider each individual student's situation and that's...
How would that work for students such as this situation where they went to an ER, they had to be prescribed a medication and they came the next day? There would be no 504 plan yet in place, nothing to implement? Those take a while to get it set up. I know even IEPs take months to get it set up. They wouldn't have one instantly after they...
So how... Our recommendation is, is to go what our legal counsel has advised us to do. And so that's what we are currently following. The board can consider changing that policy at the advisement of legal counsel. Our request is that we do everything to err on the side of the safety for all students.
Wouldn't those students...
And that a parent, we, we are happy to work if you could try to work out convenience for you, so that a parent wouldn't have to come every day and every afternoon during the duration like you experienced.
I feel that it needs to be fixed in the end, not just for my sole moment that I have to deal with, just saying that I don't have that anymore now that he's had his stuff taken care of. However, though, this does need to be fixed for adult students in the long term. It means they are legal adult. If they were to do something like you're concerned with, like passing out medication like Tic Tacs, they are legal adult. They would face legal prosecution and in trouble the same way a teacher or a bus driver would.
But the policy we have in place and the procedures would prevent that from happening if we stayed before returning?
It's the same for an adult. It's still an adult. They are an adult, no different than a teacher.
They are adult by age, but they are still a student. And they are, they are, under our rules, our policies and our procedures that have been guided to us from our legal counsel. And so we are following what we've been advised to do, so it would take an action by the board for your consideration. And probably you should seek the advisement of your own legal counsel as well before you would change a policy that would be, um, could potentially cause something like that to happen.
I think we need to look at adult rights.
How will, I guess, how will the policy, changing the policy, well, it's not even changing the wording. How will, how will changing the procedure affect the safety for the student?
We have students that may be bringing the medication on the campus. When a parent is bringing medication on the campus, they are coming for the sole purpose of delivering that medication to a licensed nurse. That's the reason for being here. A student is coming because they're a student here and there could be many distractions or many other things that could have happened. And there are varying levels of maturity and abilities on students, irregardless of their age. And so some students who may be very responsible and would go straight to the nurse and do that, there are other students that may not, may accidentally forget that they have it on them, may accidentally get distracted or have to go do something else because their sole purpose is not coming to the nurse to deliver medication. Their purpose for coming to school is to be a student to attend school that day.
As somebody who does the healthcare myself, I'm just speaking strictly from a HIPAA healthcare point of view. Sometimes 18 year olds go to the doctor without their parents being aware and they get prescribed medications and they don't have to tell the parent because they are an adult without them. It's a HIPAA, it, it really is a matter of...
I, I think that's something that you all need to seek legal guidance on. This policy was written for your guidance and so I think if you have consideration on that, that is something you all should seek guidance on before making a change.
Can we reach out to Susan Bollhammer and express those HIPAA, you guys are more familiar with that than I am, to express these HIPAA concerns and see what Susan comes back with as far as legal and the changing of policy?
Reminder though, this would only affect adult students, not...
Samantha, can I tell you why I probably won't ask to change the policy? It's not because your, your, your situation isn't important and it's not inconvenient and 18 year olds have a lot of rights. They can carry pocket knives. We're never gonna allow them to carry pocket knives.
Any more than a student, any more than an administrator or a teacher or a bus driver can. It is still a campus that is free of those things. Any more than a 21 year old student who could drink, you know, have beer in their possession, they wouldn't bring them into school, any more than a teacher would bring it into school. There is still...
But we're, we're always gonna have restrictions such as pocket knives.
Yes.
And in this case, prescriptions that we're just going to limit students in that patching.
Students, certain medications even a parent or guardian cannot even pick up for an adult student. Such a medication like Percocet, it is a controlled substance. It cannot be picked up by someone other than that individual or their spouse. Parent doesn't matter. They have to pick it up. So there needs to be something in place to where if they are considered legal adult or not, to go to the doctor, pay for their own prescription, pay for their own appointments, to be able then turn that exact medication that they are required to take by a doctor into a nurse, not even requesting to carry it throughout the day, which even if they went on an airline, they couldn't be separated from their medication. 18 years old, 19 years old, 20 years old, none of them. Even if it is a controlled substance, it can't be separated from them. I merely requesting that we had, changed the policy slightly where they can at least bring their medication to a licensed nurse at the school.
Were we accommodating as a school? Did we offer to come out to the parking lot or meet at the door or any of those things? This is a unique circumstance.
Uh...
Did we?
Uh, not coming out to the door or anything, no, sir. Uh, but the front desk was very sweet and very accommodating and the nurse was also very kind and she's like, I'm, I'm bound by policy, which I understand as the way it is currently written, which is why I'm, before all of you, can try to request to get a change and advocate for our adult students' rights.
I don't think I will change the policy for, I know it's an inconvenience, but, but an 18 year old student is still a student even though they're their own party. So I just wanted to maybe my opinion...
Would you feel that needs to be that way for a 21 year old student, to have a 21 year old adult?
They're still a student. We're always gonna have different restrictions for students on our campus. I just wanted you to know that so you knew what I said.
I know we've always been taught though, a person's feelings end where another person's rights begin. And I think that's really what we need to also remember at the same time, whether we like it or not, they are adults. And this is one of their first steps that they get to have and advocating for themselves as such, at least this way it's in a controlled environment, to where they have people around them that actually want them to succeed versus just stepping out in the world and having to figure out how to do it completely for themselves. Most, I for one, I allow my kids, like my older one, they get to go to their own doctor's appointments and they get to learn how to pay for it and all the things. You don't see no insurance granted, but they do. Once they're a legal adult, I have them go to their own appointments, fill out their stuff. I start to make them fill it out sooner. But when they are 18, I do not accompany them anymore because they're gonna have to learn. And that's one of the reasons, for instance, my student was very confused as to why he wasn't able to turn his own stuff in when I couldn't even get it from him in the first place. But yet the school wanted me involved, which, okay, I've been involved, but I, I think it's very important that we get something put into place that advocates for our adult students.
Nancy, would you be willing to...
Yeah, I mean, I could reach out to Susan, see what she has to say.
Thank you.
See if there's something that we do need to do differently. I'd be happy to reach out to her.
Does anybody have any more questions for me? I have papers if anyone wants them.
Thanks for bringing it to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you for hearing me out this evening.
Next up is our storm recovery update. Mike from Rainy James is here to present to us.
Corey, you do have, are you okay with showing the video real quick?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, that's right. Yep.
So we have, um, a video that several people have done a little work to put together just to kind of recap some of our recovery. Mr. Ford just shared the most recent with me a few hours ago. Will we get audio?
Uh, yeah, you should.
It was really just kind of awe. I, I think everybody was in shock. Um, I just remember walking across the parking lot and there's just pieces of signs and debris and things from the building, from the football field, from the welcome sign going down to, to that side of campus, just, um, just things everywhere. Uh, and then seeing the backside of this building and the wall that was gone, um, it's hard to even, it doesn't even really seem real at that point. I saw Facebook, I saw that whole wall on the other side of the high school down and I was like, uh, probably not gonna be going back for it, but it was just surreal.
Well, we all wanted to do something, you know? It's like, we were just, kept staring at our phones, surely they're gonna email us or, or let us know what we need to do. And honestly, there was nothing we could do except be patient and wait.
The first questions that really popped up was, uh, what, what next? You know, where do we even start to something like this? First thing was, um, how can we do our, our check ins with our students and their families? Um, so we ran that through our advisory classes, you know, having teachers reach out, hey, what do you need? Um, and then we also, we had faculty members who had lost their entire homes or at least use of their home and that kind of thing. Um, so kind of getting all that organized right out of the gate with those immediate needs was the first step. Uh, and then we, we started thinking about instruction. You know, it's March, we still have a big chunk of school year left. What does that look like? Nobody wanted to go back to AMI and working from home books at home. We kind of made the decision pretty quickly that we wanted to be in person, that we needed to get the kids back in. They needed some sense of normalcy and an otherwise very, um, out of the norm kind. The rest of our administrative team and our other buildings and teachers very graciously gave up their spaces. You know, our teachers in the elementary gave up their entire classrooms and started sharing, um, the career center. We had our fax classes and our high SS and all schools in the career center. Uh, middle school had multiple classes moved into there, foreign languages in there, health, some of our special education classes were in there. Um, all of our central office folks moved out, gave up the old senior high and we had two entire departments and nurses office and everything in there.
My classes, every hour on the hour, I was in a different building. So it took a little bit of getting used to, definitely.
I think for the most part, as a district, we really came together in solidarity in terms of like, look, this is not ideal for any of us. Um, but you know, we're here. And I think so many of us were grateful to not have finished online because we know that's not the most effective way to finish the year.
Yeah, we were all in together and had a sense of community, I think, within the school and that student body.
As much as we appreciated and, and needed to have those, uh, those temporary spaces in the other buildings, um, it's also apparent that that's not best for, for their students and staff and it's not best for our students and staff who needed to be more concentrated in one area.
I have to tip my hat to the folks at Brock Miller and, uh, with Flex TC. What they're able to accomplish in a month and a half, is just absolutely astounding.
It's very tough, anybody who's ever done a construction project, right? Everyone has their own deadlines and their own goals for the day and then you're coming and interrupting them. Incredibly positive people, can-do attitude. There were some changes, modifications that we had to make and they were like, yeah, how do we do that, working with us? It felt like if you're having someone over for dinner and you didn't know how many people were actually coming and you couldn't go to the store to get any food, so you just had to make do with what you had in your refrigerator. That's kind of how this felt. So we went in our fridge, went in the back rooms and we found equipment that we had there. We re-procused it and we got everything running, you know? Teachers were teaching, kids were learning on day one.
It was tight. We were all hustling to get things done. You know, we had a lot of great community help. Uh, students came in that Friday and really helped us move things. We had board members show up to help us move things, community members.
So that extra push has put us in a position that had the most normal part of the school year you could have, we could have asked for.
I think that the staff has done so much with their new spaces to really like try to adjust and make it a good learning environment for us. And I think once I'm in there, especially with my classmates, it does start to feel just like a normal school day again, so I mean...
Definitely feels like school, it's just like last year, it's just a different adjustment this year going into the temporary classroom, you build senior high, definitely shorter walk, that's for sure. But, um, yeah, the teachers have made it feel like home in there.
I've, I've lived in this community since 2006 and we've had multiple tornadoes and, and emergency events and seen how businesses, neighbors, community members, families and my staff have just, time and time again, turned up to help out and give more. It's been amazing.
I think Fair County has a great community. When help is needed, everyone's gonna come in, donate, help out, um, give everything they need to help one another and I'd say that's what's so good about Fair County.
Now you're up.
So why get the ball back? Yeah. You know, this'll be disappointing. Good to be with you this evening. Uh, thanks for having me again. Uh, if you recall, last time we were together, we talked about, um, my putting together some scenarios for you to consider. Uh, keep in mind, this is all information. We really don't know where this is all gonna fall in terms of what's needed financially speaking. Um, you don't really know the exact structure of whatever debt, uh, you, you may need to issue, but this will give you kind of some, some fences and some parameters to think about. And so I'm gonna focus most of my time on the first slide. I better put my glasses on. Our marketing department likes small prints, which isn't great for a 53 year old man. Uh, so, um, the, the first slide on slide three is really just kind of summarizes everything that's behind it. And I'm gonna go through the rest of the slides quickly, um, but please stop and ask questions as I go along and not intending really to present as much to have a conversation of what, about what some scenarios might look like. So, uh, first, the top of the spreadsheet that's in front of you is a summary of a tax levy analysis for general obligation bonds. So currently the district does not have any outstanding general obligation bonds. You do not have a debt service levy. And so I'm showing you thresholds of 10 million, 20 million, 30 million, 40 million and 50 million respectively, so that you have an idea of not knowing sitting here today, what we're looking at in terms of insurance coverage, where we don't know exactly what the FEMA designation will be and how much we may receive from FEMA. We also know that we will likely need to finance that, uh, the FEMA funding so that you have cash flow during the construction project itself. Uh, but all of that aside, if you're supplementing whatever, whatever budget you have and whatever, you know, your total project cost is with 10 million, 20, 30, 40 and 50 respectively, this gives you an idea of what the associated tax levy increase would be. And as you might imagine, since you don't currently have any general obligation debt outstanding, issuing any requires a tax levy increase. You don't have a levy currently to service that debt. So as you can see, at the $10 million threshold, we're looking at just a little more than 14 cents to fund that debt. And then again, 20, 28, uh, 20 million, 28 cents, 30 million, uh, almost 42 cents, 40 million, 56 cents and 50 million, almost 70... 40 million, 56 cents and 50 million, almost 70 cents. And I'll show you the backend support for that in a moment. But we also, and just to keep in mind, if we were to issue general obligation bonds, that would require an election. More than likely, I think the timeframe we've discussed would be the April election cycle. And that would acquire a 57.14% voter approval. So just keep that in the back of your mind. And then also, below the general obligation bond scenarios, I provided a certificate of participation scenario for several scenarios. CLP debt or certificates of participation is what the district currently has outstanding. And before I go with scenarios, I want to remind you, you currently have 19 million, 80,000 of, 19 million and 80,000 of CLP debt outstanding after you paid your last principal payment. So currently you have Series 2019, which was a new money issue, a Series 2020, which is another new money issue, and then you have a Series 2022, which is a refunding. And so that constitutes all of your outstanding CLP debt, which again is just over 19 million. And you might be surprised to find out that issuing CLP debt, we can actually issue $10 million of CLP debt without a tax levy increase. In fact, I can show you, I will show you on the backend here. You could do 17 million on a no tax increase, which might sound counterintuitive, but I'll explain that when I get to that slide. To issue 20 million in CLP debt, you would need almost 3 cents. 30 million would be almost 14 cents. 40 million would be 26 cents. And 50 million, you would need 38 cents. Okay? So let me explain the CLP scenario. Currently, you have outstanding CLP debt, as I mentioned, that will expire in the coming years. And to issuing CLP debt, you're already using a portion of your levy to service that debt. And so we can issue CLP debt and wrap it around and have principal payments come due when your current outstanding debt expires. So on the front end, you would just be paying interest payments until that CLP debt, you're currently paying on principal payments on expires, then we would ramp up your principal payments on the backend. Yes, sir?
So when will our current expire? Or is that on another sheet?
I can tell you that I looked...
Around 2037.
2037.
Give me one second here, I'll tell you exactly when. 2037, exactly right. Yeah, it's on another slide and I'll point that out.
Mr. Mike, the certificate of participation also, our temporary levy would factor into that, right?
It would.
Temporary levy goes away in 2037.
That's correct. So what you would be doing, I'm glad you mentioned that because first I want to mention that going to the voters and asking them to approve an extension of your levy that sunsets requires 50% plus one. So it's a straight, simple majority vote. But yes, you would be asking voters to approve an extension of your levy, your temporary levy that sunsets in 2037.
So that's how it would work, it would be an extension?
It would be an extension. Well, that would be up to you. I mean, you could ask voters to consider a levy to begin in 2037 and run into perpetuity. Or you could have an extension which would coincide with this debt issuance, which would seem to be following suit as to what you've done historically and sunsetting debt when you're done with principal payments.
So the zero tax increase for the $10 million, you're still going to be asking for an extension of that?
Yes, that's correct. So let me go through some of the supporting information. I won't spend a lot of time on the general obligation bond scenarios because it's pretty simple. Each one of these scenarios, I'm showing you, and just I'll go through this first scenario, the 14 cent scenario, it's on Slide 5, which provides $10 million in general obligation bonds. So calendar year, total assessed valuation. We do forecast 3% annual growth, which is predicated off of what you've done historically. Then the next column is your principal payments on this new money. Interest, total debt service. And the next several columns are your revenue that you would collect. And then your second to last column is your debt service fund balance, which I'll point out that that is all in the black. You're not at the tax levy of 14, just over 14 cents. We're keeping your debt service fund balance in the black, which is what you want to see. And then the last column is the actual levy that is required for that threshold. And that's really, that will follow suit, just as I laid out there on the $10 million scenario. Same with 20. We're just looking at a 28 cent levy increase for that scenario. And then on Slide 7, $30 million, again, it's just almost 42 cents. Slide 8, almost 56 cents. And Slide 9, almost 70 cents.
That was what you just mentioned, the guard was of how you would issue or is it customary to issue if you have voter approved? Would there be a scenario where you didn't need as much, you wouldn't issue as much?
Not typically, but that is possible.
But the levy would stay the same?
If for some reason you ask voters to approve, let's just say a 70 cent levy, and we got further into the process and we realized that what we thought was a $60 million project was actually going to be a $48 million project, we can lower the levy. We don't have to issue all of them.
The board can lower that levy?
The board can do that. The board can voluntarily reduce any of your voter approved levies. You just can't raise the level when the voter approves.
Gotcha. But once you move it, if you were to move it down, is it as simple as moving it back up?
No.
No.
You look like you knew the answer to that before.
I did, but I want to make sure.
Yeah, you're correct. Okay, so moving on through to Slide 11. The board asked me to provide, you know, what the taxpayer impact would be. And the next, lots of numbers here, so I won't read this to you and this could kind of serve hopefully as a resource for you as we move through this process. But on Slide 11, I'm showing what those costs would be for residential taxpayers. So just, you know, looking at the annual property tax. So the top box, from 300 appraised value down to 100 appraised value, the top box, that's showing the taxpayer impact on an annual basis. So just looking at that first column with the 14 cent tax levy increase for a person with $300,000 value home, that will cost them $80.94 a year. And again, I won't read these all to you. This can serve as a reference and you can see what the taxpayer impact on an annual basis is for each of those thresholds. And then we also provided that impact based on a monthly, or on a monthly basis. That's residential. Slide 12 is commercial. Residential is assessed at 19%, commercial is assessed at 32%. So obviously, the taxpayer impact would be greater for commercial. And again, I won't read these to you, but just to give you an idea of what the impact is. And typically, the way, one of the ways we would support you through an election if you actually were asking taxpayers to consider a tax increase, we would provide this information for you so that you could use it in your informational materials so that taxpayers are well aware of what the impact would be on whatever threshold you decide by. So again, all the scenarios laid out there on Slide 12 for commercial. And then also, we have the scenarios for agriculture. Used a wider range of values there, since you probably, I'm guessing you have a pretty wide range of different types of agricultural property throughout the district. Different types of ag property are assessed differently. But in terms of their total appraised value relative to their assessed value, this gives you an idea of what the taxpayer impact would be for that category. And agricultural property is assessed at 12%. Questions at that, at this point?
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
What if the district needed, let's say, 30 million?
Okay.
And we decided that we would need that for a project? What's your top two reasons for choosing a general obligation bond? And what's your top two reasons for choosing a certificate of participation?
Yeah, that's a good, great question. The top reason for issuing general obligation debt is because on the same day, so if I were comparing issuing general obligation debt today versus issuing certificate of participation debt today, general obligation debt comes at lower interest cost. And the reason why is because you have a dedicated levy that by statute, you are allowed to adjust as you need to service the principal and interest payments. You're required to adjust that debt service levy to meet your debt service requirements. And it is not subject to the board's annual appropriation of those principal and interest payments. You have to pay that debt. Certificate of participation debt is subject to the board's annual appropriation. So in theory, the board could say, we're not making our principal and interest payments this year. And you have the authority to do that as a board. Now, there would be consequences to that, right? Just like we would if we didn't pay our debt in our homes or what have you. So, but because there is that annual appropriation risk, it comes at a little higher interest cost. So typically, a general obligation bond, which is say Perry County, let's say your S&amp;P rating is an A, which is a good rating, it's investment grade. For least, that would be an A for general obligation debt. You would be an A minus for annual appropriation debt or CLP or lease purchase debt. So that would be the difference primarily.
Like, what's that gap? 2%, 30%, 1?, 1.5%?
No, not that much, no. I mean, it depends on the market. I'm going to say anywhere from 10 to 20 basis points, which is .02, .01, .02 percent. Over a 20-year term, that adds up. The other difference would be, this would be a positive for the general obligation debt. General obligation debt is in its own fund and it lives there and does not interact with any of your other funds. So right now, and we talked a little bit about this historically, but right now you have, what's your Fund 4 levy? 45 cents, something like that. It's not paying for, your Fund 4 levy isn't even paying entirely for your principal and interest payments. So...
It's over 35.
It's 35.
35, that's...
Because of the handoff, we aren't collecting 35, it's rolled back to us.
That's right, it's like 32 and some change.
So we have to actually take some over from the general fund and move it over to 4 and over to bank payment.
Yeah, so it, I use the word cannibalize. I mean, having debt in Fund 4 where it co-mingles with your operating funds, you know, you're eating some of the funds that could be used for other operating purposes. Having said that, the district is doing just fine servicing debt out of Fund 4 and it just so happens that the pro for CLP debt in this scenario is you can do more without having such a significant impact on your taxpayers. So, you know, a couple of pros there for the general obligation team, but there's also a pro for the CLP team and that's, you know, it minimizes. Because you have CLP outstanding debt and we can shape your new money issuance around your outstanding debt, it has less impact on your taxpayers. That's pretty much summarizes the pros and cons of each.
How does a, how does a general obligation bond debt service levy go?
Well, it depends on whether or not you ask voters to sunset, to put a sunset on it. You can't put a sunset.
In the initial, the election into the...
That's right, that's right. Now, I say that, but if, let's just say you issue general obligation debt and say we issue 20 million and let's say that your assessed valuation grows beyond what we had forecasted and you start developing these significant surpluses in the debt service levy. Well, the state auditor will only let you keep so much in fund balances in the debt service levy. So then you would start to have to prepay or pay debt ahead of schedule. And eventually, if you don't issue any new debt in the debt service fund, even without a sunset, your levy will lower or go away. Now, that's a pretty obscure example because typically, you know, we're talking about issuing debt over a 20-year time period. And typically, within a 20-year time period, there's going to be another capital project need in the future that would allow you to keep your levy. But in theory, it would go away if there was no other debt needs through that 20-year repayment point.
But if you had another capital project, new building, maintenance, whatever it is, you could just no tax increase extend it?
That's right, that's correct.
I mean, that, I remember that's what got us into trouble with our old buildings is we had no capital funding, so we couldn't maintain them very well. And so then they just slowly deteriorated over 40, 50 years. So I mean, there may be an advantage to that, you just have to find them.
There's definitely, I mean, if you're judging one versus the other in a vacuum without the taxpayer impact considerations, you know, issuing general obligation debt, either preferred method, generally speaking. But again, we're, you know, I think I'm hearing from everyone that you want to be sensitive to, and it's been clear to me in listening to you, you would be sensitive to taxpayers. So the CLP example does minimize the impact to your taxpayers.
Mr. Mike, we're also in a unique situation where it's possible some projects may be reimbursable by FEMA. Is there a pro and con to either, if we decided that we needed a certain amount, but a percentage of that would be refunded back to us or reimbursed to us? Is there a, is there a pro or con to that one?
Yeah, that's a good question because the short-term debt, I'm not sure yet. I've actually been talking with bond counsel about the vehicle that we use for your short-term debt. Even if we're doing a general obligation bond issue, we might consider a lease purchase finance for that short-term debt because that might be the most accommodating vehicle to get you that short-term financing. I mentioned last board meeting, the possibility of issuing notes, which are short-term financing vehicles. We also could consider a three-year CLP. It just has a three-year maturity, you pay it over three years and then that goes away. So I don't, I don't know what vehicle we would use yet. I want to try to get down the road a little bit further and have an idea of what the timeline is for the project, how quickly, you know, we could expect to be reimbursed after the project is over and then we'll start to examine vehicles for the short-term financing.
Well, it's how much cash flow you need. I mean, because if we can do 10 or 17 without, I mean, on our own without it, that would finance the short-term.
That's correct.
If we had to, just whether or not it's enough.
That's right. So as we get further along in the process, we have an idea of what the timeline and the construction build-out, the cash flow needs through that period of time, then we'll have a better idea of what vehicle will make work best. And I'll make sure that you're aware of all vehicles and the pros and cons of those.
So with the lease purchases that we currently have, so will we, right now, we're covering our payments, will that continue?
Yes, yeah, actually, that is a good segue. I want to spend a little bit more time on your CLP tax levy analysis slides, the slides that support this, that I did on GO bonds because there is a consideration of making sure that you're making, you continue to make your current CLP outstanding debt payments, but also can handle the new money as well. So if you'll look on Slide 8, sorry, I went back. I need you to look on Slide 15. So this is the $17 million new money scenario. Paul, I mentioned earlier, you could do 17 million without increasing your tax levy. So if you look on the right-hand side column, that is your 65 cent levy that, I know it's not, you're not levying all 60... I know it's not, you're not levying all sixty-five cents in Fund Four, but for all intents and purposes, you're levying sixty-five cents in Fund Four and Fund One. And some of that Fund One revenue is getting, is making its way over to Fund Four. So, for the sake of discussion, it's a sixty-five cent levy that is needed to service that debt. And you can see, if you look at the fourth column, that is your existing principal and interest payments together. Okay, so you can see those laid out through twenty thirty-seven. And then we are, we have a proposed series twenty twenty-six there in the muted gray. And as you can see, we're layering in principal or interest-only payments until you get to that twenty thirty-seven, and then that's when your principal payments come in. And if you look at the total debt service column, your total debt service with both your outstanding debt and your new money, seventeen million, your, your debt service is relatively level. It does go up to match the increases that you would expect to see in your assessed valuation, and thus your revenue. And as you can see, the capital project funds balance, second to the, the last column to the right, it continues to stay, stay in the black throughout the life of your existing debt service, but also your proposed series twenty twenty-six, and that only requires a sixty-five cent levy, which is not anything more than what you're currently using to service your debt.
So, you're just asking, asking the taxpayer to extend it from twenty thirty-seven to twenty forty-five?
That's, that's right. And we would have, if we were going to the voters with that, we'd have bond counsel draw that, you know, that ballot language with, with the sunset coordinating to be added on last maturity.
So initially, the district was chipping at twenty cents and putting fifty five. Sixty?
Oh, yes. I mean, the district is paying for all of your outstanding debt, but sixty-five cents is what you're currently using. The revenue associated, associated with making your current payments is being generated from a sixty-five cent levy. It's just that some of it is being levied in Fund Four, and some of it is being levied in Fund One. But you're using your annual tran, your one-to-four transfer to supplement your Fund Four needs, whether it's your annual capital improvement needs, or...
But that's where we move the classroom fund or...
Classroom trust fund.
Trust fund and stuff over there.
That's right.
The total amount that's getting moved over is the equivalent of thirty cents getting moved over. Well, your sixty-five cents here is our thirty-five cent... Level, actual. Prop kids, plus our original actual tax levy that we have.
That's right, yeah, that's correct.
So that's the total.
Now, you're, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the only sunset levy you have is your thirty-five cent levy.
Mm-hmm, yes. So then the question would be, will the increase in revenue continue to support thirty cents being transferred from Fund One to Fund Four?
That's what he showed, he showed the state of sixty-five all the way down.
Right. I wanna guess. I don't know what's the capital twenty thirty-five, so... Mr. Mike, this scenario is with the sunset vacillating?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
What, I mean, the...
Still gonna pay sixty-five cents, but it sunsets at thirty-seven.
Yeah, this, this would be having a, an extension of that sunset approved.
Okay.
Yeah, so...
Two forty-five?
So from, from, from twenty thirty-eight to twenty forty-five, we are continuing that sixty-five cent levy that's needed for that debt. But that would require an extension of that sunset. But, but here's another thing, I mean, this requires further analysis. But if you look at your fund balances, the last, from twenty forty-one to twenty forty-five, we can play with that. So, as we get closer to actually coming up the ballot language, and we know what your financial scenario is, you don't wanna have a capital project fund balance that high. So, we could play with, okay, what does it look like to lower that levy in years twenty forty-one to twenty forty-five? Because you're, you have too much cash flow, that's such a thing.
Now, for my own little bit, we might need this just for the short-term cash flow.
Possible.
This ten to seventeen million. My problem is, is if the building is, let's just say, thirty-five, you're still gonna need some additional funding there, dude.
You are, you are.
Which means we'd have to have, you're thinking we still need the COPs for the short-term funding, but then a general obligation, or even if it's still COPs for the long-term. So, I mean, would we ask for two different amounts? I mean, how, how do you, how do you fund the short-term? I mean, as long as the short-term stays under seventeen, you know, you still gotta ask for the extension.
That's, that's...
You should have, yeah, and let's just say we need forty.
See, so, the only thing we really need to account for with the short-term issuance, and this is why we haven't identified a vehicle yet, the only thing that we need to account for in your short-term issuance is you're gonna have to pay interest payments. So, the, the interest payments that you will be required to make depends on, so, I mean, there's a, not to get overly complicated here, but there's a way for us to issue debt and use capitalized interest, which basically allows you to borrow money upfront to make your principal and interest payments. So you don't need any additional cash flow. So we might be able to finance that, that short-term money outside of the scenarios that I'm showing you. Okay? So again, that, that's a little bit more complicated and requires us to involve bond counsel. But, I mean, it's conceivable that it has nothing to do with what I'm showing you here today. I just wanna make that clear. We could be using the same type of financing, at least it could be lease purchase or COP, but it may be structured differently, first to reflect the short-term repayment or a three-year maturity, or whatever the term might be. But also, the possibility that we may need to do some capitalized interest to help you make those payments until you're waiting for that FEMA money. Okay?
Mr. Mike, you said the deadline last time, the second week of January, if we were going to ask the voter for money?
You have to file by January twenty-seventh with the board of elections, so...
So our regular schedule is the second week, it sounds like we'll be within that.
That would be your drop dead deadline.
Is, we, we don't, I don't know what number we need yet. When do we, when do we need to tell you our needs to help with drafting that? Language?
You know, we can do it pretty quick.
Okay.
I mean, I typically see boards, I shouldn't say this, I've worked with enough districts now that I don't think anything's necessarily typical, but I've seen districts adopt resolutions most routinely in December. So, you know, we, we would need to be shaping up kind of the scope of work and, you know, what your, what your number is somewhere around November for us to finalize for December. But this is an extraordinary situation. And I know districts that aren't dealing with an extraordinary situation that still adopt the resolution in January. So, you know, if I, I guess if I were in your shoes, I would kind of plan for a December election resolution, but give yourself the greatest necessary to understand that it may push to January because of the, the unknown factors out of your control.
So, Mike, could you do two bonds in the same ballot?
Yes, you can. I mean, it's actually two questions on the same ballot, it's no typical, typical. Usually when I see two questions on the same ballot, so, you said two bonds, so if we were to do...
Existing and on the facilities.
So, if, if we were doing a bond issue, a general obligation bond issue, and, you know, I was talking about some short-term debt, but also, you know, funding the, the difference in your need for capital project, that would be one bond issue, one question, and a series twenty twenty-six A and a series twenty twenty-six B. So that would all be in the same ballot, I wish. The, when I see two questions on the ballot, typically, there is a general obligation bond issue, and there's also the request for a levy increase. And the levy increase would be operating. So yes, two questions is, is definitely a possibility.
Versus trying to get a second approval?
That's right, that's right.
Or could we just do a general obligation bond that's whatever we need for this and encompasses the remainder of whatever we still owe on the COP?
Yeah, I mean, our, our goal would be to make this one question, if at all possible. Two questions tends to be a little confusing. You know, then it brings into the, the question of what if one passes and the other fails, and what do we do then? So...
Didn't you say two fresh levels of...
They're, yeah, for different, for the different type of financings, yes.
So those would happen as a question?
They would, yeah. Yeah, for those, for those two separate, if we, if we used each of those vehicles, there would have to be two, two separate questions, yes. Now, if, if we were using, let's just say you wanted to do a general obligation bond issue, and we were using a lease purchase finance for the short-term debt, and, and you don't need any more money than what, than what you have in revenue currently, and it ends before your sunset, the board could make that decision on your own without an election. Okay, do you follow, follow me on that? So if we're, let's just say we're gonna finance short-term debt, you know, just to get you by until you get your FEMA money, we would run a cash flow analysis on that over three years. We could probably use the capitalized interest, as I mentioned earlier. And if you don't need any more revenue than what your sixty-five cents is currently providing for you, and that debt would be paid off before your sunset, you would not be required to go to the voters in that scenario if you so chose. So, that, that's an op, that's an option to keep in mind as well. As we get, again, toward having some understanding of what it is we're actually trying to finance here, you know, those are, those are things that we, we need to discuss as we get closer to the November and December cutoffs.
This is the one that you have up there, Mike. Would the language say that, that that's just extending that to twenty forty-five with no increase in levy?
That's right.
Okay.
And so, just to make sure, we go through the other scenarios. The next scenario is the same exact slide as the last one. It is providing twenty million dollars in COPs. And as you can see on the far-right hand column, you're going up just, just under three cents. Okay, so you're going from your sixty-five cent levy to your sixty-eight cent levy. And, yeah, go through all of these, with the same, with a thirty million dollar, or layering it in. Then you have almost a fourteen cent increase to your, to your levy. Again, these are all extensions. And then eighteen twenty-six cents, and then slide nineteen thirty-eight cents.
So, does, what, what we do with school remodeling, renovating, tearing down, building, we don't know yet. But does this, does what we do determine this, and does this determine what we do?
What you, what you end up doing, I mean, there's, there's variables here. What you decide to do in terms of scope of work. So let's just say you, you decide that you're gonna go with a sixty million dollar scenario. Okay, so, we have to find funding for sixty million dollars worth of work. And so, at some point here, hopefully soon, we're gonna know how much you're gonna receive from music. And let's just say it's, I don't know if I can say it now, I don't know what it's gonna be. Thankfully, I never had to deal with this in my, my career as a super tenant. But, they're gonna give you a number. Well, that's going to deduct from that sixty million dollars in terms of what we need to finance, okay? That's gonna come in all, all at once, essentially. Then we've got this FEMA money, and so let's say it's, the insurance is gonna cover X, FEMA's gonna cover, cover Y. Well, that doesn't deduct from the total number, because you have, they're not gonna give you that money until your project is done. So we're gonna have to finance that on that short-term note for lease purchase or whatever structure or vehicle we use. And then, on top of that, you have the total difference, which would have to be financed over a twenty-year or a twenty-five-year. One difference in, in the financing vehicles that I forgot to mention was general obligation bonds can only be financed over twenty years. COPs or lease purchase can be financed over twenty-five years. So that does give you a little bit, that does lower your annual principal and interest payments a little bit, stretching it over twenty-five years. You're paying more in interest total, but it does lower your annual debt service payments. So, we have to have, the scope of work really is the first step. And then we get the, you know, the insurance number, then we're in business. We can start working on a very specific plan of finance.
Dr. Jones, do you have a good understanding of this? You also have to do a multi-million dollar budget, which gives you more flexibility?
More flexibility?
What's one do you watch? I haven't, I haven't had a major... Before, before she answers, let me ask a scenario, because it may impact her answer. If we choose to do, let's just say, general obligation bonds, seventy, forty million, but we decide to roll to nineteen million we still owe in, so we go from fifty or sixty, I mean, the total amount would be equivalent if it was just a fifty or sixty as opposed to... If, if, my, my point is, though, is that we're no longer borrowing from Fund One to help pay that off. It would all be in Fund Three, which would give her the additional flexibility potentially, because we're not stealing the third, or I shouldn't say stealing, but moving thirty cents over to Fund Four, right?
Yeah, that's my, that's my understanding. In all reality, the day before the tornado rolled into town, literally, we were discussing a scenario, we being, Dr. Jones and I, a scenario of getting rid of that outstanding COP debt and issuing general obligation bonds, so you can isolate your debt service in the debt service fund. It does provide greater flexibility.
The debt service would be covered, because you collect the amount to make money.
It's in that fund.
And so then, we could then, if, if we could move the other debt over in with that, so then Fund Four becomes more of a long-range budget planning. So we would, we would say, okay, for three years, we're gonna save up, and we're gonna do this smaller project ourselves out of our balance money. Right now, I struggle to do that, because I'm making payments and I'm transferring money to, from One to do that. So he uses the word cannibalize, because it really restricts. It, it takes me a much longer time period to build up enough money to renovate an athletic field ourselves. So that's why, in the beginning, the conversation before the tornado hit was, let's, let's move that debt to a place at a level, like Jamie said, that would pay that off and cover the payment, so that we could start paying for things ourselves. Small things over time.
But you'd have to, but you'd have to sell that, because the taxpayers would not be paying any more than what they would be for the thirty million, unless you said thirty, you know what I'm saying? You're gonna still be paying the same total amount, it's just how we bundle it together. But by freeing up Fund One money, then that gives us more flexibility on potential raises or, I mean, other things like that, too.
But now, we're looking at a much different scenario, because, you know, we're, we're thinking total dollar amount. If, if insurance doesn't cover what we want to eventually do, how much more money do we need? And what's the lesser of a burden to the taxpayers to get to that amount?
So you could do a thirty, if you got rid of all of your outstanding COP debt, just over nineteen million, we could issue thirty million, nine, a little more than nineteen towards your, getting rid of the COP debt, and then roughly ten million for a new money project. That's the scenario that I was showing Dr. Jones the day before the tornado. You could do that on a no-tax increase. You would be asking voters to consider a tax increase to the debt service fund, but you could lower your Fund Four levy by the amount equal to what your increase would be in the debt service. in the debt service fund. So, the net effect would be your tax, your total tax levy would remain the same. But, I mean, what's the likelihood that we're looking at only needing $10 million in new money? I don't know what that likelihood is until we get some, some answers from, from insurance and FEMA.
Mike, would you ever write bond language that says, if this bond passes, then we're going to forfeit the prop kids, the 35 cent tax levy that was voted on?
Yeah, that's essentially what I was suggesting with that, lowering your Fund Four levy by the amount equal to the necessary increase in, in that service fund. Because if, if, you, you wouldn't have a choice, because if you, if you refunded the outstanding COP debt with general obligation bonds, you have forfeited your ability to levy that amount by statute. So, you know, once, once you take away the debt service payments, then your, in, in essence, your, your levy expires at that time.
Tell me what I'm missing here when I say this statement. When I look at certificate of participation, I see a sunset, and so, I will be here in 2045, and I probably won't be here in 2036 even if I put this down. But it feels like general obligation is permanent. And when I'm making a decision, looking at it from a taxpayer, that feels like the general obligation is permanent. Am I thinking of that wrong?
It, in many cases, yes, because districts often ask voters to consider a, a tax levy... I shouldn't say it that way.
It allows you to provide long-term funding projects in the future.
It does, but you, you can put a sunset on a debt service levy, just like you could put a sunset on a Fund Four levy. Okay? How, I mean, hardly ever am I working with a district that does not have a general, or that does not have a debt service levy and is establishing a debt service levy. I can tell you, like, with all the districts we're working with, the ones that have a debt service levy, they're utilizing general obligation bonds, they might be supplementing general obligation bonds with some lease purchase debt because of bonding capacity limitations. But the districts like Perry County that don't have a general obligation, uh, don't have general obligation debt, who don't have a debt service levy, I typically see those districts issue a COP debt. I, I, when I look at Perry County, I think of Savannah, very comparable demographically, enrollment similar, Savannah being just north of Kansas City, north of St. Joseph. They don't have a debt service levy, so they, they issue strictly lease purchase debt, and it is tied to a sunset. Actually, they have, they have a couple of levies, some that have a sunset, and then they have one larger one that does not have a sunset, so that's actually a forever levy, unless the, the board decides to do a voluntary reduction of that levy. So, I mean, I don't, I don't see it happen that often where you're establishing a new general obligation or debt service levy. But it would seem in this situation, again, pre-tornado, it seemed like this was an opportunity to get that debt out of your, out of your operating funds, but then the tornado came in and we're looking at a totally different situation. So, I mean, if, if I were to, to tell you which were, would provide the most flexibility, which would be the best option in a vacuum, I'd say issue general obligation debt, but we're not in a vacuum. You have to be mindful of the taxpayer impact and the perceptions in your community, and I, that's why I'm showing you more than just one scenario here. And, you know, we don't know where this number's going to come in, you know, and, you know, what, what it may cost to your taxpayers or, or not, as the case may be.
I heard everything you said, but does a general obligation bond, are you saying it's rare that it has a sunset?
I would say that it's less likely. I see that less.
Do you see the, you don't have to see it. As a board member, I feel, asking the voter, the voters will decide, or, I like the idea of asking them for a temporary amount of time to get us where we need to be. It feels like general obligation bonds are asking for, in the 20 million case, 28 cents in perpetuity. Which, we all pay bills, and that's likely that we'll need that, but that's for a future board to decide at that time. That's the way, that's my view, changed my mind.
I, I, I think, I'm a big fan of adding a sunset, whether you're asking for a tax levy increase for the operating fund, or whether you're asking for a tax increase in the, in the debt service fund. I mean, that gives your voters the ultimate authority of whether you extend that levy or not. And if you have a compelling case, you shouldn't have trouble getting that levy extended, but the voters have to decide that, not, not a board.
Can you change my mind, David?
No, I don't necessarily have a problem with that. I mean, if, if we put a sunset on it, if whether it's general obligation or the COPs, if we're coming up on 2045 and we decide we need a new building or we need whatever, we can just ask for an extension.
That's right.
I mean...
Whether it's in Fund Four or Fund Three.
We just need the ability to create long-term income, or capital funding, because otherwise we're going to have a bunch of new buildings that look like our old buildings did in 30 years. We just have to be able to maintain them. That, that's all I'm worried about.
And I mean, you know, keep, keep in mind, if one financing mechanism is, is viewed as superior to the other, it, it doesn't matter if one can pass in your community and the other can, right? If the preferred method can't pass, it, it, you know, it's useless. So, I mean, you know, the, those are the political considerations for you all to, to...
Well, there's your other, there's your other plus COPs, is your 50% plus one versus the 57.
And the taxpayer impact is, is...
Is low.
Less.
Any questions for Mike?
Thank you for participating.
Thank you.
My pleasure. And I will block out your board meetings until through January.
Hopefully, you don't have anything the next day, so you count a five-hour grind.
I like to, I like to stay tonight if I can, but I, each of the last two times, I've had meetings in Kansas City the next day, so I'll be with you whenever, whenever needed, and just let me know if you need me moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay proud.
Thank you.
Another thing on the storm recovery update is, I was talking with Pat Nager the other week, and we talked about, it might be a good idea to put together a storm recovery committee, and go ahead and get some people from the community, maybe staff members, parents, general community members onboard, looking at some of this FEMA stuff, helping us analyze the money, you know, because we were seeking public input on how to A, B, or C-type plan to get some people engaged with us, throwing some ideas around, and we have that committee started. If we've got to go to the voter, we've got a group of people that are ready to go and present and educate people as to why we need it. I don't know what everybody thinks about that, or what, what the process to start this, but just reach out to some people in the communities, set their stakeholders, try to get some people onboard.
Well, you might go get some people that are on, like, Lions Club or Chamber, you know what I mean, get a representative of some of those groups, because then they can go back and talk to their groups, too.
And we had a meeting at the Robinsons', we had some parents, we had some staff members, we had some people that came out that were passionate about being there. I mean, we could put a group of people together that can be at some of these presentations, and, and ultimately, the board still makes the decision, but we would be seeking that public input the entire time, and, and hopefully, be ready to make decisions quick when we hear from insurance.
Well, I think it's important that we have that input through the recovery process and then to stay with us down the road with what's going to happen, because we, I mean, I think we need input just for that, what we're doing for the recovery process as well. I mean, you know, tear it down, you know what I mean? I mean, I think that's important to have, is people go through the whole process within the recovery and then the next step, because if not, I think that's the only way we, we partnership and we pull ahead and we let everybody know what we're thinking and what we want to do with our schools. Look like that in Perry County and our schools. And, I mean, I think it's how we got the kids passed, is having that committee that was kind of behind us and helped us, so I think it's a wonderful idea.
Are you okay with starting a committee and trying to maybe send some emails out, put some time on social media, get people to let us know that they might be interested in that committee? Any opposition?
We, I've heard that.
I don't think so. Because I think it would be important that we could get a diverse, get a diverse crowd as we go.
Very important. Well, fine, I think you just let one off.
Okay. Let's, we'll do some digging on that.
If you need me for any of those sessions, I'll make myself available as well, pretty typical for me to do.
Very good, thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on to program evaluation.
We added three more program evaluations for the board's consideration of your board packet last week, that those programs were food services, safety and emergency response, and transportation. If you all have any questions, we're providing those as informational items.
Any questions on those evaluations? Okay, moving on to our spring assessment reports.
Hey, do you need a line? I wanted to go ahead and pass out paper copies of what you all may have received with the board package. Okay, starting, let's start with the math ELC scores from last spring. And on page one there, beginning at the top, this is similar to what I've brought to you in the past, the proficient and advanced scores for each grade level and each content area. So, the green highlighted boxes, when you go across 2025, that shows longitudinal growth. So, for example, the fourth grade score there, that is a group of students who grew from their previous score in third grade. So, you're going to be looking diagonally to see the growth that happened with the same group of students. Also, it's, it's a little bit harder to see, I have folded some of the squares. Those are the grade levels that are above the state average in score. So, for ELA, that's the one on the top, third grade and seventh grade were above the state average. On math, fifth grade and seventh grade were above the state average. And then down in science, eighth grade science, I want you to notice how much that group has grown from previous years, or with a crowd, continuing to grow in that area.
Ms. Allen?
Yes, sir.
On the ELA, is there, could I say that the cohort of third went from 32 to 39? Am I reading that correctly?
Yes. And so, if you're looking at the fifth grade, you can go back two years. And so, they went from 42.9 to 31.8 to 32.4.
Okay.
Okay? And I like to look at that longitudinal growth because it's the same group of students. Obviously, we like to see, you know, third grade scores went up from last year's third grade scores, that's great, that's, that's wonderful, but we really want to grow specific students. We want to see that growth happen, because that's really all we control, is the growth of students. If they're not where they need to be, how can we grow them to higher proficiency?
Did you, you combine proficient and advanced?
Yes.
Usually, that's where it's split out. Did you see much difference in those two?
Typically, proficiency is, is grade level. That's where the standard is written, and so, that's what we want to see. Like, we'd like to see everybody at proficient. Advanced, they're going above.
Did you, do you recall if advanced grew or just more proficient?
In some cases, we had some growth in advanced. And also, I, I, we'll get to the next page here in a minute, one of the other things that we want to look at is, and if you want to go there, we can look at that, the, the lowest proficiency level is below basic. Obviously, we don't want our students in below basic, and so, we want to really push to move them out of that. And so, when I show growth in the below basic, have we lowered those numbers?
Sure.
And so, that's, you know, even though we don't have students maybe in proficient and advanced, if we have moved them to basic, out of below basic, we can work on them then the following year and, and continue to push them towards proficiency. It's all about growth.
Just those four categories, right? Advanced, proficient, basic, below, and...
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
What's on the ELA, what's the E1, E2?
Good question. So, English Two is the required ELC, that is done at 10th grade level. We decided that we would do English One in ninth grade this past year because our English Two scores have not been where we want them. And so, we thought that would give us information that we could use for our English Two students this year.
Okay, so the state average is on here, right?
The state, I, I do have the state average, it's on page three. Okay. So, then, if you look at the below basic, like I spoke about, you can see the, the growth there. Again, if it's folded, it means we're below the state average. If, if it's green, we lowered our below basics. And then on that third page, Mr. Brockman, that you had asked, I do have the state average there. So, these scores are not public yet. They have not been publicized, and we are not yet at a place where we can compare statewide. So, all we have is the, the state average that we can compare to at this point, and so, you can see there the difference that I have put in the far right column. And I do want to shout out to you, sixth grade ELA, which was very close, and also third grade math, which was also very close. But they were not above the state average, so we didn't note that.
So, what would be thoughts on, like, English Two, Algebra Two, and Biology?
Those are, those are conversations we're having right now, as you might imagine.
Well, I mean, just even the radical difference between Algebra One and Algebra Two?
So, Algebra Two, there, that's 17 students. So, it's a much smaller cohort. So, however, that is not a typical score, and, and I, I don't know that we have any quick explanation for that at this point. We had two of our top teachers teaching that course. I am not going to blame any circumstances, you know, ice storm, tornado, I'm not going to do that because I don't want to do excuses. Is it one of the considerations? Yes. But that's, that's not going to be what we stand on.
So, is it safe to say that English Two and Algebra Two are primarily sophomore? I mean, I know it's not tall.
Primarily, yes, there are a few outliers. Primarily, yes. There are a few outliers. Algebra 2, I would say, were probably all sophomores. Am I right, Mr. Schaefer?
Right.
English 2 could be a mix.
Were that valid?
Yeah.
Oh, sophomore.
Sophomore. Oh, and I do also wanna mention too, Algebra, Algebra 1 is the required ELC. Students that take Algebra 2, those are the ones that took Algebra 1 in eighth grade. So that's why we have only seventeen students that took Algebra 2.
So they're actually freshmen?
They're taking Geometry as a freshman and Algebra 2 as a sophomore.
Wow.
So these are students on the advanced track within math, which we can answer the question. I would call it.
Yeah.
It's very odd.
I was just trying to remember the progression from Algebra 1 to, I forgot Geometry stuck in there. No problem.
And I will say, just based on our NWEA scores, that did, they did not align with like an Algebra 2 results. We did what we could to make our testing circumstances and environments as positive as we could last year. You know, we were spread out in four buildings. However, I feel like we did a really pretty good job considering everything. So I, I don't know, there's not a clear explanation at this point. But it is something we're definitely looking at. Okay, the last page that I, I wanted to bring to your attention is MPI and also there's the proficient and advanced again. So MPI is an acronym for map performance index, and it's like a weighted score that's given to students on their map performance. It's not a raw score, it's a weighted score. And so several of our buildings have used MPI as part of their building goal. And so I wanted to go ahead and track what happened with the MPI. And so if you look from map index 2024 to 2025, looking right at the first line there, ELA grade three, those are different cohort. Those are different groups of students going straight across. But last year's third grade had an average MPI of three sixty-nine point seven. This year's had a three eighty-four point one, which reflected in the proficient and advanced scores too that you saw the jump in. The green there, what we're looking at is the difference between the two years. Now, I, I wanted also do the longitudinal growth again. And so we don't have that at third grade because we don't have a second grade math test. So starting with the, the column there under longitudinal growth from third to fourth, you can see how our fourth grade grew our kids in ELA. And so while they were not above state average, I just wanna point that out. We did grow them and were pushing towards that growth. We didn't reach the mark in, in all areas, but we still had some pretty, pretty decent growth there. Same groups of students growing each year. And so I felt like that was worthwhile for us to track because we had set goals that we felt were achievable but also challenging for our, our buildings and our grade levels. And, and we wanted to be able to track that specifically instead of just proficiency. Like, we wanted to use a number that was a little bit more defined.
But it's notable growth until you get up to the seventh and eighth grade.
And when, and once you get to eighth grade and to the ELCs, it's hard, it's harder to see longitudinal growth because they skip years. You know, there's, you'd have to go back several years to track that. And I only went back to last year since that's when we first started the goal setting with MPI.
Ms. Saram, do you get a breakdown further than, can you see categories of, probably asking the wrong question, asking this the wrong way, categories of standards in that score?
Yes. Yes. So we, we do. And that's actually, honestly, this is, this is the, this is the overall.
The overall, yeah.
Yeah. This is, okay, it's, it's kinda, it's good for our teachers to see, but this is not actionable for us. And so what we use, we, we use items. It's broken down by items, what kind of standard it related to by the, you know, by each question, how they asked it, what level of depth of knowledge the question was, so that we know how we scored on each of those items on the test. And then what we can do is we can do an analysis on where will we weakest, where, where do we have some strong points, and we can start to make some changes to our, our curriculum in, in the sense of how we instruct, where do we need to focus more type of thing. Sometimes that's helpful and sometimes it's not because I'll be honest with you, sometimes we get some standards that we score really well on in certain questions and some that we don't score as well on. And it may even be the same depth of knowledge, it may be the same way of asking a question, and it's just, was it the test question, the way it was asked? We don't know. But that's what we do. And so that's, we have actually been in the process of already working on that. High school probably are just now beginning that work because they've been trying to start school. But that's what we're doing and where we are. And then how we can make some changes going forward. Does that make sense?
It does. Can I ask another question?
Sure.
If I'm a role model sixth grade teacher, can I look at my fifth grade students' scores and break that down into standards and see if I see trends for a certain standard that was not met?
Yes, and we do that.
And you do that?
Uh huh.
How do you hold, how does a building leader have some accountability with that?
Well, the accountability is all of us. The accountability comes in, in what we call collective teacher efficacy in that we all own every student and that we're all working together. It's part of our professional learning community. So as far as, you know, shaming and blaming, we don't necessarily do that. But what we do is we work with teachers on how they can improve and adjust their instruction. And so that is happening with our instructional leaders in, in the sense of how can we shore, shore that up? And in our PLCs, we do that every week. You know, teachers are sharing how students did on their assessments, and my students did this and your students did that. Wow. Can you share some of the things that you did? And, and those are the kinds of things that we're doing.
Do your building leaders, are they able to identify trends? My classrooms more than just one year. I mean, if you have, do you also look at twenty twenty-four?
So.
And, and I mean, twenty-four and twenty-three and, and see?
Yes.
Is this certain classroom?
Yes.
Professional always low in these standards?
So, you know, here's, here's how I'll, I'll answer that, Mr. Sattler. It's with our students, we're the same with our teachers. If we have a teacher who's struggling in certain areas, we're always gonna be focusing on growth. I don't, I don't know if you've noticed, but we don't have a whole lot of people lining up to come into the teaching profession. So we've gotta grow our people. And so that's what professional development's about. That's what our professional learning communities are about. And yes, sometimes we see trends, sometimes we don't. Sometimes, who I would consider some of my strongest teachers, just, just like with Algebra 2 this year, we had, we had results that we would not have expected based on what we observed in those classrooms all year long.
But that would be atypical from previous years?
Yes.
Maybe if you've seen that trend over years, you're gonna have special attention to that.
Yes, absolutely.
So our building leaders are, are looking at multiple years and identifying those trends?
Yes. Any other questions? So next steps, we'll continue to work on these and we'll be coming back to you with some of our solutions that we hope to do. Next, Mr. Sattler had asked at the last board meeting if I could share our ACT scores. And so let me explain how ACT scores are reported. When a student takes an ACT outside of our school district, they can choose who that test score is reported to. And so oftentimes, we do not get those scores. We may get them, we may not get them. So when I am reporting this, this is only from last March when we had our district test here on campus. That involved sixty-eight students. And so I broke down how those students scored. Now, I want you to remember, this was every student in eleventh grade, and we had some twelfth graders could participate free of charge. We paid for their test. And so you had all abilities, all levels that participated. And so the average for our district was eighteen point four, with the median being eighteen. Range for the composite score went from twelve to the, of the lowest to thirty-one highest score. The Missouri State average, just for your information, for our composite is nineteen point eight.
Do, do you think you can break down at the age, could we, do you think those are most juniors or do you think that?
The majority are juniors. We only have some seniors.
For the state average, too?
Uh, no, that's.
That could be seniors.
Most, most seniors second semester are taking.
Right. No, it would, it would be most juniors would probably be. I, I would suspect are your highest there.
Even at the state.
Some tenth graders, so, I mean, you're gonna have some that take it early, but.
Okay.
And then twenty-one of our students in this particular cohort scored above state average. And then I broke it down by subject area and then the range of scores that we got by subject area. And then down at the bottom, I just wanted to show you, here's what ACT tells us is college readiness scores for each of those areas so that you can see that as well.
Who made the ACT this year?
Mark Chen.
Do you, and this may be a Mr. Schaefer question, do you expect sixty-eight or do you expect more this year?
I suspect more. I don't know if Mr. Schaefer agrees with me, but I feel like that was year one for us doing it. I feel like we'll have more that take advantage of it this year.
How do you promote that? Is it just at the student level or also at the parent level?
I believe there was information sent home last year with parents, but I, I honestly, I'm not certain of that. I believe that, that we did. I will say, I spoke with Ms. Lefler, who's our site coordinator for the high school today actually about this. And she, she says she wants to get started on it earlier and start really advertising it, so to speak. Social media information being sent home because you're right, if we can get the parents involved in knowing that this is coming, they're gonna be telling their kid, go sign up, you're gonna take this test. So that's the plan.
It saves you a hundred and twenty bucks too, or seventy or sixty?
Sixty. It's sixty-five, I think, actually.
Is there an advantage to do it in the spring versus the fall? I mean, on campus, I mean, that I guess doesn't matter, but my question is.
I mean, it would be nice to do it both seasons. We just, we did not get a plan for fall this year. So, not with everything else that was, that was going on. But there's actually a couple of dates. We could do March tenth and the twenty-fourth, and we even talked today. If, if we had a massive amount that signed up, we could potentially split it up into those two dates. Those are the two allowed dates that we can have on campus. So we may consider that as well, depending on where we have to do it. So having meeting room space is kind of interesting these days. So. So just remembering, I mean, here, here's what I will say about this. It's, again, it's not where we would like, but it's everybody that has come, come who may to take the test. And a lot of our students who are, were more motivated and planning on college maybe a little bit earlier probably had already taken the ACT and maybe did not take advantage of that. Although, we would encourage everyone to. As you can see, we had, you know, thirty-one and several others that were pretty high. There's always the chance that you can up your score. So we would.
So is the STEM number, is that a separate test or is that just a combination like that inside the score?
Yes, it's a combination. It's not separate.
I don't remember that even when my kids went through, so that's relative to.
Yeah, not separate.
Do they, do they break this down into further with standards or not?
We don't get a report of that. Yeah. So this year, I just wanted to remind you again, we'll be doing the ACT, we'll be doing ASVAB. It's coming up here in November first, I believe. It's beginning of November. And then the Acciplacer will also be being offered as well. So that's all for our eleventh grade students.
Are less colleges looking for the ACT score now?
You know, it's, it's a mix.
I'm just wondering if that's.
It, it is less. There are less.
Or they're using a super score and if they've already taken it a couple times more, they don't feel like they need to take it again.
Right. But, you know, always there's an opportunity. If, if we're paying for it, you know, you get that super score up there, that, that's only gonna help you. But that's my opinion. We'll be encouraging that. All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next, we'll need to end, uh, schedule a roll call vote to schedule a closed session to discuss student personnel. Record matters as permitted by revised Missouri statute. Six ten point two on section one, two, three, six, thirteen, fourteen, and twenty-one. End the conclusion of open session.
Nancy?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
London?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Dominic?
Next up, we have a letter of resignation. Melissa's moving out of the county and she's resigning her spot on the board.
So I say. I personally wanna say thank you. Takes a lot of time to volunteer to do this and learn things from you just by the way that you consider a teacher's point of view and also a parent's. So I wanted to say that couple, but you will definitely do this.
I am definitely gonna miss you. It really has been truly an honor to serve my community and my school. My honor.
Appreciate everything you've done. We all have our opinions and sometimes it's better to hear those opinions and kind of gives you a broader aspect of things. And I appreciate, appreciate you doing that.
So we have to make a motion that, what I'm understanding, declare a vacancy. Make a motion to declare a vacancy on the Board of Education.
Did you second it?
I don't think, no. I don't think I can second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Just need a motion to accept Melissa's. Okay.
I make, I make a motion to accept Melissa's resignation.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those vote. Yes.
Thanks again.
Thank you. Yeah, then I think at this point.
Please.
The next is the policy and procedure to approve a new board number. I read it. We can put this out, has to be out for two weeks. And then we can choose to have a special board meeting prior to the next board meeting to appoint, or we can add the next board meeting. That's the way I read it.
Did this, did this change, I, I, I just, the history of it because I don't remember having to fill out all of this paperwork. Cause that's how I got on this, this whole appointment.
That was exactly what MSBA gave me.
Okay, I'm just wondering if, cause we, well, we adopted MSBA after I got on the board. I was gonna say, cause this was a different procedure than what I followed and so.
The only thing, the number I would change is hours per week. It might have been that before.
You put like three or four in there, didn't you?
But one hour per week won't cut it.
Madam Secretary, is these candid questions in the policy or was those?
The interview questions or what I have found in previous.
In the previous.
Those are adjustable as you would like. Just an example.
That's what we use previously.
Yeah, no, that, I, well, I don't remember. I thought I submitted a letter, then I got something back. Cause I think I had to type something up. I thought I submitted a letter, then I got something back, because I think I had to type something up. Or responses to questions like that, I think. No, maybe I'm thinking about running after that. They're similar to the questions that I put in the paper.
Those interview questions would just give us an opportunity to separate one.
Yes, yeah.
These are submitted interview questions, not in person?
That is the way I took it.
Do we have an in-person session?
I said we did.
I think they're in the interviews.
I said we did.
I have some interviews in public session.
And the applications are collective or two.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I don't think I typed it out, because they asked me these questions. There'd be no reason to ask the questions if you have those. So I mean, I hope we do different questions than I do.
I just understood that these were the questions that you use to do the interview in person.
I, I would agree with that, Dr. Jones. I think these need to be asked in public session. If you, if I can get that, do you agree with that?
We had a lot of stuff we had to kind of ranking system. I think that's on the second page. Well, it's out. But we had.
Yeah, we went through and ranked each other and then totaled that up and then whoever had like the lowest score is who won. Is that?
I can create a rubric to go with these questions.
Well, I don't remember if we even just did it by question or if we just did a total.
I think we just did a total.
You just said, you know, I said this person was my first, this one was my second, this one was my third. Nancy may have said three, two, one, and then whoever, you just put them in a box and then whoever had the lowest total is the one that we picked, if I remember.
Yeah, I have that on the board.
Mr. President, how do you, how do you plan on advertising this vacancy? We want, we want to get as much visibility and quality candidates in that scene under this.
I personally, I know it said that we have to put it in the newspaper. But I personally would just contact Mr. Ford, let him do it through all our channels.
Yeah, Melissa got on.
I will smile.
There's two ways to put in a newspaper. Enough to get it by legality with some words. And then there's a way to make it, maybe we're looking for a vacancy. We're looking for people to apply.
Newspaper editors right there, I imagine he did. I'm gonna name this on it if we ask it. Just to kind of highlight it that we're gonna be needing somebody. Here's the, here's the application process.
And I'm sorry if I'm missing this timeline. When do we have the application back?
Two weeks. It was like two, I think it was.
We have to advertise it for two weeks.
Two weeks.
So we have to give two weeks of advertising to secure those.
Is that beginning tomorrow?
Well, it would be once we get the. It won't go in the paper tomorrow, it won't go in until next week.
It'd be a week from tomorrow.
Week from Thursday, okay. So two weeks from next Thursday?
Correct.
And then we'll have a separate public session to interview the candidates?
That would be my choice. I mean, I think we could do it at the next general meeting, but I think it'd be better to do it separately.
So the October second will be the date they submit them. It'll be lasted.
October second would be the last to.
Yeah, I think it's submit.
To submit and then we could have a meeting, because our regular meeting would be just the following Wednesday.
I really don't want to do the regular meeting.
I don't either, because I want.
Shouldn't we do the.
I want us to focus on whatever, whatever, everything else that's going on. Because I think that's a.
Yeah, I mean, we could meet on the evening of the second, if they're due at such a.
Yeah, we could do that.
Five o'clock, we could meet at seven o'clock on the second.
Or even like Monday though.
Well, it would have to be.
The person that has to submit an application?
I.
We, we had, we reviewed the application and then decided to do the event interview.
If you did that, you would not want to try to have that meeting the same day. So the, so the interviews up to Monday or Tuesday are common.
Since if we pick somebody, they could attend that meeting.
Correct.
They could attend regularly. If we interview on Monday or Tuesday, the sixth or seventh, they could be here for the meeting.
The sixth would be better for me, that's.
Yeah, that Monday?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would agree.
So we will get this coordinated, we will get it out. We will plan to have the deadline for applications October the second with interviews of candidates for October the sixth. And we will try to swear somebody in on the.
So will we get those dates, the interview date then? I don't know, I've read in there, so I don't.
Interview finished, I think so.
Okay.
Make motion to proceed with the appointment of a new board member with the timeline of October second. Applications due and interview, say that one more time, Mr. President.
The sixth.
Monday the sixth.
Second.
All those in favor? All those vote. Okay, next we are transportation.
Hi, Dan.
Hello. So we have some information that we wanted to share with you on Purple Wave Auction. I don't know how familiar you are with it. I had heard about it several different times through MoValley using to buy and sell items. During our conference over the summer, we heard more about it through MAPT. First time we had heard of transportation departments using it to sell used surplus buses. So we made some more contacts when we got back to our city and county, just to try to get some more information on how it works. Found out who our local contact would be through Purple Wave. Melanie had called him, he came and met with us, gave us a lot of good information. And then she put this powerfully together with the information that was provided by him.
So we're wanting to sell four of the C two Thomas buses and one Minotaur. And the purpose is to dispose of the surplus assets efficiently, because we haven't been able to do that by giving bids. the reason why we want to sell them is to be able to get a lift bus. We checked on a lift bus that held four wheelchairs, but they do not have one available at this time. So we're looking at a three wheelchair lift bus and they are larger and it's a diesel. But they're larger than the Minotaur's even.
We had recently gotten some information that one of our lift buses that we currently have has some engine issues that they feel is not worth fixing. So we are down a lift bus.
So we feel like Purple Wave is, is good for us because it's got such a high demand for the quality used buses. It's got over six hundred thousand registered accounts in over one hundred and ninety-four countries. When we met with Dan, he had said that he thinks we could get at least sixty thousand out of Thomas buses. I've been watching the auction on different buses and even like the Internationals and Bluebirds are going for fifty, which is a lesser quality than what Thomas is.
Can you say it, Doug?
We cannot.
That's what's scary.
That's the, that's the only drawback. Because we are a government entity, there's no fee for us to sell or purchase. They handle everything from coming here, taking the pictures, making the posts, sending the information out. They handle the buyer completely, they handle all the paperwork for the titling with no fee to us.
So what do we think we can get forward if we didn't go through here?
I'm sorry, say that again?
I mean, if we didn't go through the auction.
The last offers that we had, those were like fifteen thousand.
That's what I was gonna say. So I mean, in theory, we should, I mean, without setting a reserve, probably we hit fifteen anyway is probably a big guess. So it's fairly low risk.
I actually talked to these guys from Purple Wave last year and they said they weren't too familiar with buses. And when I talked to them this year, he goes, oh yeah, we're moving a lot of buses now. This is, this has become a good thing. And he said, you got nice buses, this is gonna be.
You, you guys aren't too concerned about theirs, are, based on what you can see on there?
Right, not too concerned, I know that we can get. He was saying low fifty and high would be sixty or over.
I feel like we, just knowing what's been on there, we would get more than what we've been offered.
So what we're looking for tonight is board approval for listing with Purple Wave so that we can schedule the photography and documentation of everything and get this going so that we're able to get the lift bus that we are down one.
What's the cost of a lift bus?
We're s, uh, one, one hundred and fifty-seven.
That was for the, it holds three wheelchairs, like Melanie said, it's, it is a diesel bus. So it's more like our C twos, only a lot shorter. We could put three wheelchairs on there and then that still leaves six full-size seats as well for other students. Currently, the chairs, the buses that we have now hold two. And we are, we are at four wheelchairs.
That's what I'm saying.
Students, yes, right now.
So you have a little wheelchair then.
Mm-hmm.
In turn, this would save on maintenance as well for the year.
There's four that you're picking up now.
Yes.
The new bus will hold three. And they're located close enough together to, that wouldn't be too long a ride to pick up three or four.
Correct. We have one bus that's doing it now. We had three lift buses, one of them is down. So we're running one and the other one is used as a backup in case we have issues with the one we're using. So right now, we're making multiple trips, dropping off and going back out and grabbing the other students. If we had the other bus, then we wouldn't have to do that anymore.
You said there were no four wheelchair buses available, is there a timeline window? Would you kind of allow?
Usually ordering is about a year out. He has looked for new or used and he hasn't been able to find anything with four chairs. The four chairs would also take us down to four seats instead of six. They currently do have the three chair on their lot new now, ready to go.
Is there a huge difference between the number of chairs passing on price? Between a two and a three or a three and a four?
Not really.
It's just how many other passengers you can get on the bus?
Correct.
And was that bus in our budget?
It was not.
But you should generate enough from this, based on what Easttown, you should be pretty close.
Yes.
Make a motion first to use the Purple Wave to sell our surplus buses.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
So you were able to pick them all four up with one bus and found out we had four chairs. What would be the bus ride time for the person?
Um, right now, we're with doing what we're doing, we're probably about an hour, an hour and fifteen minutes. So I could say less than an hour doing all four. So it would be less, less than an hour. Yeah, our first student is about twenty minutes out of town.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Senator Cannon, report.
We have the expensive revenue report. It's still the one, straight, the not pretty one. But I anticipate that we're gonna have a very pretty one next month. Mr. Freeman and Lacy have been working together in SISFIN. And they have pretty well been able to completely replicate the dashboard for us. And we will be running it ourselves. So it looks great, we just want to tweak it and make it just a little bit more perfect. But it, it works amazing. So it has all the same data here. Again, on a single dashboard for you, small amount of paperwork, lots of information. And we'll also give you the projections from prior year comparisons. So this one is difficult to take a line code and compare it to several years before to see any trends that are going on, so, which I think is very important. Instead of just looking at one year budget at a time, you need some prior year and the before so you know about making projections for the year. So I'm excited to get that in front of you. I am so very impressed with what they can do so far. So hopefully this is our last of them.
Mr. Jones? The percentages of budget seem pretty high on campus-related buildings. Does that include some insurance spending?
Well, that's gonna be very skewed, even by codes, because things that we know we have to have now are going to be reimbursed by insurance funds, but they are coming out of our current budget codes. And we have to then move them out and move them over to insurance once we get that money to pay them out. So it should clean itself off, but it's gonna take some time. What I have is just the one. And so we have all the technology here that we need for construction. So we have made use, and I'll let Mr. Freeman speak as well, but we, we made use of what we had so that when we are ready to move in to the new, we are able to purchase new. We're not using the old anymore. And pulling it out of the refrigerator, we will be able to get the newest and the best using the funds that we get from our insurance reimbursement. We did get some new purchases initially. A lot of the teacher devices, we were not able to recover right off and we had to have them right away. And so we did make that big, we got a lump sum reimbursement real quick from insurance in order for us to purchase a lot of the faculty and staff devices. So those are brand new. But the smartboards, coffee machines, I can't imagine all the behind-the-scenes equipment that they have been able to utilize what we had to get us up and running. It's been very impressive, and in the time span that they did it, amongst all of the other construction and tradesmen doing their work, it was absolutely phenomenal. And then we also have, we're continuing to share that list of, just those tornado loss purchases for you all, just to kind of see where we're going with that as well.
Do they, on those repairs, do we get paid after they're complete? I notice the, the balance is kind of skewed there. So when they're complete, they issue those credit suits or checks?
I don't know, they've just, they've kind of come at different times, honestly, in the midst of that. Some of them have come to us, and we were able to deposit before the project was finished.
But, but everything that we approved a debt on, it was already approved by insurance?
Yes.
It's just when it comes in is a little skewed?
And you can see that the debits and the credits are being tracked there, so you can see both.
On the, on the tornado ledger, what is the, the, I have a change order for the bathrooms?
So, that I think we probably should have had much more of a, a longer description there, and that, and that because it wasn't just that, because you can see there is also a bathroom down lower on the list as well. So that particular change order would have had some bathroom changes in it, but it also had a lot of other change orders in it. So we changed out...
The list of change orders was in the warrants, and there was numerous.
So, that one probably needs much more description to go, to match up with that list.
Okay, so these, these change orders are over and above the cost of buildings? Beginning, the 6 million?
So they are in that, that pot of, the bucket he's calling the extra expense bucket. So the original contacted amount with what's TC, we've had change orders beyond that.
So the amount for 64 is about 7,300, correct?
Correct.
That's TC.
Okay, one figure of 78.
Then maybe that's, I know we originally passed that it was 64, but then these other things came up and it got out.
So was that with the, was, did the 64 include all the buildings? Or was the additional for the buildings down the park?
It included all the buildings, but there were changes to the buildings. We ended up not putting the one on top, we brought it out separately. Remember, the music was originally on top of the band, and so it ended up being a separate building, but that original had all of the buildings in it, but there were changes as they were being built.
So did we get to the 7.8 then, because of the change order?
Yes.
I think this bathroom change order was over.
Look to number?
One was 262, and one was 61, and we realized change order quarter of the numbers.
And we are still struggling with having enough bathrooms. We, they proposed a large portable, they had a bunch up in it, I don't remember the amount of them, and it's, it's really going to be expensive, so we, they talked about parking that on the other end of the, near the concession stand for more events and the students traveling. We decided not to go that route. So we're trying to make do with the ones we have.
Because of the outdoor stuff, yeah, so what did you, why did you not go that route?
It was very expensive.
Okay. I could be dreaming this, but I thought the city-owned one that they put up in the park, and is it in use all the time? Do you even know that answer? How come? I don't think it is, but I've seen it. Maybe it's used all the time, I wonder?
Did you think that we keep, you're talking the, the set of porta-potties on the trailer, the jetty on the, they're currently set up on that parking lot at the bottom of State Street, for you to get into softball games that are around that field by PHS?
Is this the busy town for the fields?
Also, softball season.
Understood.
And I think the actual construction of that large learning expo, there was a whole lot we had not expected in order to make those function well and not drill down into the ground. And so I think we weren't expecting that amount of space to be laid, and that attitude as well.
And then two, I guess I didn't realize that those were prevailing wages there as well, it was...
We have to pay that.
I know, I mean, that was a big chunk too.
And then there are expedited, expedited costs, so, because we were in such a rush to get, get truckloads brought in, we paid expediting costs as well. There is, that's a whole separate bucket in our insurance that should be covered as well. So we are currently under the amount of that extra expense reimbursable that we haven't exceeded it yet. If we exceed that amount of what's allowable by insurance, then that will need to be turned into FIM.
But do we know the answer to the question yet, these different buckets? Are they going to add up to the lump sum that's been discussed? The possible lump sum from the insurance company? Will these individual buckets be subtracted out?
What will be subtracted out of that is what the insurance has already paid to us. But as far as Mr. Donnelly negotiating a global settlement, he would add all those buckets together in his proposals, but what insurance has already credited us, he would back that off.
Okay, so how much is insurance present?
We'll have all that in front of you after.
I think the last time I was, was that around 100?
Okay.
I, I seen that at some point, I thought, you know, John, but they've issued several checks.
Who did that, Paul?
Yeah, they've issued, they've issued several checks to us. Any questions about that?
No, thank you for bringing that together, it was really helpful. So I went down through the warrants, I was like, I've got to pull that out, and that out, I was kind of trying to make sure I caught everything that you...
Well, we give Lacy the credit for granting this report, so thank you, I appreciate it very much.
Next is the job opportunities list. The open spots that we still need at best.
It's going to look very similar to last month and the month before. We hope to fill a couple of spots here in closed session coming up, but that's, that's a good thing.
More news later.
Attendance before.
I'm sorry.
So we put together some initial numbers there for you, that was also contained in your board act there, and we've got our building leaders here this evening, and I think has made one way around several times the last couple of weeks. I think I can speak on their behalf about a good start, or maybe even a great start, they said, to the school year. Tenants has been really good, and so we're excited about the start of the school year. And I want to publicly thank not only our administrative leaders and our building leaders, but all the staff and the audience here, because without their help, we would have never gotten started on August 20th or August 25th. So thank you all very much.
Questions or comments about the attendance number? Now we're to the board.
It's a long list of events. With a highlight. Mrs. Steele, I would be interested to read that article. Some highlights there, if you'll. And we'll be covering it for you.
Yeah?
That's Ford's.
Very busy schedule.
Very much appreciate Mr. Ford putting, putting this together, he's, he's, he'll do it as something you can put it on the fridge in reference, and I hope it's very helpful to you.
Can I just pull it up? Any more?
Make a motion to adjourn the open session.
Sir? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Open session.